If they have that extra 10 minutes that we own us, so they gotta try to make it up.
Yeah.
Ten more minutes out there.
What was that years ago driving tractor up and down that road?
Oh my gosh.
Twenty years ago, I used to fund some property out here and I funded in her people. And drive them with tractor.
Driving your, yeah, you're right, a celebrant.
They were not happy.
Uh, six o'clock, shall we get this thing open? Are we, are we, um, up and running online?
Yep, we are.
Let's see, what is the date today? Like to officially call to order the, uh, planning commission meeting for August 12th, 2020. Shall we first rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have almost a full house, so we do the roll call.
When George Johnson present?
Alan Angel here.
Harry Zaharis present.
Lee Brayley here.
Do we have Janet on the line or MIA?
We have a user online, uh, username is Buzz.
All right, well, we're gonna assume that's not Janet and we'll assume she's absent today. She did ask me if I would share because she wasn't sure she's having some back issues apparently, so. Would somebody like to, uh, we have some minutes we need to approve. Anybody wanna make a motion that we do these by, um, collectively?
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes for January 8th, 2020 and the minutes for May 13th, 2020.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? No? All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay. Right into the public hearing then. We've got a, uh, a, a public hearing to discuss the general plan map change for parcels AV 1376A and AV 1376M from R1 residential one acre to agricultural. Uh, the applicants are here, so I'd like to open the, uh, public, um, hearing. And we'd like to start by hearing from you all what your, what your application's about.
Okay. We, we're wanting to take the property and we actually need to build two homes on the property. This time one for me and my family and then my mom and dad are elderly. And we really need to have them right next to us. And so we'd like to put a, a house for them on the property. And in our application, we put that we want to break one acre off in one corner for their house. And I, our plans are to run a few calves on there, fatten a few steers up and do just basically a homestead. And we have, we're working on trying to get water rights put to the property and a well drilled so that we can grow some gardens and stuff on there. And that's our general, what we're looking at.
Got you.
Can you state your name for the record?
Uh, yes, Jeff Spindler.
I thought about that one.
Sometimes it's better to say what you want and then decide when you want to say.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah. You could always deny, deny the request. You don't need to know my name. Well, the hearing's open. Anybody else? Uh, anybody have any comments?
On their issue?
Uh, just on this particular issue, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, I'd like to close the public hearing. And then now is a chance for us, just the four of us here to discuss this amongst ourselves. Anybody see any reason why this shouldn't just sail right through?
What's, what's the rest of the land around it?
It looks to me like it's all, uh, pretty much open space, right?
Current, current zoning's open space. The general plan designation is residential in the surrounding areas. It's all, and it currently uses very, very remote density residential housing.
Have you at all, have you familiarized yourselves with any changes that this might, um, there are ordinances to, to, that, that address different zones. Have you gone through that? Make sure that you're not boxing yourself out of something you wanna do?
I think so.
Yeah, and we've looked at it pretty close. I think the ag zoning pretty much covers what we're able to do.
All right.
I had a question though to mind on, um, the, something about parents building house or one acre. Where does that come from?
Yeah, I'm there. You, you've got it in the bottom, like southwest corner?
The southwest corner. Their VLM on the one side to us.
On the 200 east is the north south though, if I'm mistaken, on the bottom of their property.
Changing that to ag, is that what we're doing?
That's what I think is right, right? That's an RE1.
RE1, yeah.
So it will be both houses on that particular acre?
Yeah, there, so there's a, we'll put the other house on the 20 acre piece, the, the rest of the 20 acres. And then we'll put the, the, break that one acre off for mom and dad's house.
Okay. And you, you're aware that, that, that one acre, that there are some rather significant limitations to the number of animals and types of that stuff.
That's gonna pretty much, just, the, the animal might get on there once in a while.
Yeah.
I just wanna clarify though, that that one acre is not gonna be zoned tonight, is that?
That's part of their application, I believe.
Yeah, it's, it's farther down the application. There was two or three.
There's two different.
So that one acre was.
Because you can do a lot split later on, the one acre piece that's actually selling something else. And one, you know, so.
No way, I wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're.
That if, if they wanna pull off one acre after we've zoned all of this ag, you can have a one acre ag. We've accepted that.
Right, 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 yeah, no, they've, they've boxed it out as a, yeah, yeah.
They have a box now, there's a RE.
And it's, it's described that way on the paperwork?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
They even have a little. They've got a nice map.
Well, I see it's drawn that way. I just want me to describe that way since we've changed that one parcel. And that one parcel includes that one acre today, because I don't think we've done that.
And it also had the exact description on the application, the dimensions of that one acre in the southwest corner.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, good question though, to make sure you do it in the right order here, so.
I mean, the surveyor ready, I'm on the survey.
All right, um, well then, why don't we go ahead and take action on this? Anybody wanna make a motion that we approve this?
I make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second that. Any further discussion on this? Uh, there's a paper. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Nope, all right. There you go. Um. Next agenda item is another, uh, public hearing. We've got, uh, four of these tonight, so let's, uh, this one is a, um, hearing on a zone change uh, for parcels AV1 376A. Wait a minute. Oh, did we just do both of those at the same time? We just did both of those. Oh, no, 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 we did the general.
The map change, and now we need to do the zone.
Yeah, okay. So, um, we basically did have this, had the discussion of one. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and open this public hearing anyway. Anybody have anything more to say on this topic? All right, let's close the hearing. Um, now let's vote on, uh, somebody wanna make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, zone change?
I move that we approve the zone change for parcels AV dash one 376 dash A and AV dash 1376 dash M to A10 and RE1 for the one acre that's been designated.
Nice motion. I'll second that. Any more, uh, discussion on that? All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, question, Harry's?
Was that, was that aye and no, or is that an aye and aye, aye for the?
You are just delaying your aye, right?
You are delayed aye. Okay, we got a delayed aye.
Sorry, I spoke too, I, I, I compressed the.
That kinda confused me too.
Yeah.
It's okay if you have a lazy eye.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, uh, we have another public hearing now, um, to discuss proposed changes to 11 dot O2 dot O4O. Necessity of plat exemption from plat requirements. I'd like to open this public hearing now. Anybody here have anything to say on this topic? Say your name and let's hear it.
Mary Kennedy. And I just have a brief statement to be here for me to read then. So here goes. I do support a streamlined process that allows lot splits without a formal review for planning in some circumstances. I don't support our current process or the code changes being proposed here tonight. My primary objection to our current process is that the mayor is the only decision maker. The planning commission has no role. When you couple complete lack of oversight with the absence of planning, you get the problems we have today. Also, the mayor has the authority to demand exactions, like having the applicant deed over easements. But there is no oversight to prevent him from asking for too much or to be inconsistent in who is asked for what. Even if you believe our mayor is a saint who never makes mistakes, the next mayor might not be. I can't support a process that allows this potential for error. Yesterday, I sent the planning commission an email explaining this and why the changes being proposed will make our problems worse. In my email, I offered suggestions for improvement. The changes I proposed are very different from how our town usually operates. If anyone listening is interested in learning more about this issue, please call me and I will email the proposal. I think more citizens should become involved in the, planning and governing, governing of our town. My phone number is 435-680-4664. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
What was your name again? Mary Cannon, Kennedy? Did you receive the email? I did, yeah. But I don't have your name on it here. It's on there. No, I just printed the attachment, so.
Anybody else have anything more? Any comments on this? I'd like to hear from, uh, town staff just to give us a, a little background as to what, prompted the proposed changes. So the mayor or.
Public hearing or do you?
Oh, oh.
Now, or did you, I, you know, however you want.
Yeah, let's go ahead and close the public hearing if there are no more. I think, like, let's, real quick, just, let's check if anybody online has anything to say before we get too quick with that.
Uh, yeah, any users that are on Zoom online that would like to make some comment on this, go ahead and mute yourself.
Okay, hearing none. Uh, let's go ahead and close the public hearing and then, um, as part of our discussion, I'd love to hear from, from you.
Yeah, but, um, and Sean, by the way, jumped in on some of this. The, the reason, uh, we're looking at this was because we've had, um, every time we do a lot split, not sometimes, every time we do a lot split, we get temporary requests to come in. And we're challenged on that we didn't do it right. And things that come up is like, we didn't have the, uh, utility commission sign off on it. We don't have a utility commission. I mean, I, I use common sense in some of this stuff and, and as I work through this, um, apparently because we don't have that, I'm not doing it legally right. And it also says that these have to be done by deed. The deed is what actually, when you go to the county level, the deed creates the actual lot. But I don't want them to create a lot. Have you ever looked at a deed that says, go this many feet north south at this many degrees? I mean, if anyone can read that and make a lot look, picture what that is out of a deed, it's, you know, power to you. So we've always asked for a record and survey, which gives us a graphical look at where are the roads, where are easements? What are they creating? Where's the road that's going to connect to that? And we go through all of this stuff. We have, uh, our staff review it. And we go through this process because we're interested in making sure that there's a road access. And if there is a road or there's not a road, how are they gonna get to the property? Simple things like that. And I've been even challenged on that, that people say that, well, there's no road requirement in this, uh, code. Really? You think you can create a lot that doesn't have, require a road? And so anyway, I went to the state of Utah's, uh, website and saw that there's been some updating. Worked with Sean on some of this as well and, and basically, uh, we're trying to just clean that up because we don't have a utility commission. We agree that big plans should sign off. And the fire department, they sign off anyway because they're part of the town. And then we have, um, Ben reviews these things. I review these things. In some cases, my person might review these things as well. So this isn't done where, you know, dark at night, I just sign a piece of paper. We, takes people sometimes to get these things through, working with an engineer as much as two months to get these done because they haven't drawn them up properly, they haven't provided the right kind of documentation, um, things like that. And, uh, so I'm just trying to clean up the code and we're mimicking closer to what the state of Utah says. Our says you only have three lots. State of Utah says up to 10. And, um, the, uh, the direction, um, in fact, I'll let Sean talk about the direction, why it is the, it's 10, why. Do you have, you had some involvement in deep writing this code, put this in Utah? Yeah, our, and we've worked closely with the large development community in Utah. We, um, meet with them as a league of cities and towns and the association of counties. Uh, every year, we're, we've been doing it now to develop, uh, some new legislation this for the year coming up. One of the, one of the problems that have been raised over and over again is lot splits, for example, where communities require in full plats. When, um, most people felt a record or survey would do. And, um, we were trying to make it cheaper for some people that simply were dividing a plot of land they had. It had to meet the zoning ordinance at the time. So if there's ever an argument that the neighbors don't have notice, the notice for those neighbors would, would have been at the time that they took those, let's say it was a subdivision of a minimum of five lots and changed the zoning to half acre lots, five acre lots to half acre lots. So now you know, when you buy in there, that even though you have a five acre lot, any of your neighbors, including you, could divide them in five into, uh, half acre lots. So it's legal to do so. When it's legal to do it, they, what we were trying to do is make it simpler so they could just go down to their surveyor and get a record or survey that meets all of our requirements. If there are any needs for easements or roadways, those would be shown on there and they'd be dedicated by separate documents that'd be attached. An easement document, a roadway dedication document, anything like that would just be attached to it. On a full blown plan, full blown pa, plan that costs more money, you'd have all those notes on there. You'd have to have a lot of people sign on it. And, uh, so it generally costs more money. This is easier. We still get a title report to look and make sure that they have title to transfer that property that is dedicated as a roadway, for example. And, uh, that was the process that we came up with. Now the 10 or fewer, that was a, that's, to me, it's like, how many people can gather during COVID? It was very well thought out in that someone said, hey, 10 sounds good. That's what it feels like with the COVID thing, right? It's like, oh, it's all, it's 25, it's 50, it's 75, you know, you don't really know. I can be honest with you. 10 is just something that's been used historically, uh, by a lot of cities for a number of years. I don't know who reached that 10 number. But we all agree that that probably was the maximum number of lots you'd wanna do with this.
Again, it would only, but it would only be possible if the zoning allows it.
Absolutely.
That's gonna trump the number of.
Absolutely, so.
Right.
So someone's coming in and proposing something different, then you'd have to do the zoning change, the zoning.
So it sounds like what you're doing is you're, you're, any, any changes you're making here are to, to reduce some confusion that you've seen so far. But you're, you're not pushing the limits of, of, anything that's defined in this section, uh, can't trump our zoning laws.
Not at all. And it has to be policy matches, really, what the state.
Okay.
And that's one of the things the administrator that does it administratively would do.
Right. Um, let me ask, is it true that there will have to be a deed that results from the split legally no matter what?
You don't necessarily have to do it that way. You could do it with the records. It can.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just wondering why you have or as the option rather than a and. Okay.
I'd love to do that. Because, you know, this is a little banter between me and the attorney. I said that I don't see the point in asking for a deed, or we care what the deeds is about, because that's created the document. The deed has, the deed is actually what's reported at the county. Record survey can be recorded, nothing happens. When the deed's reported, the lot is free.
Right.
And, and if.
So we really couldn't even ask for a deed. We could ask for a draft deed.
You could ask for.
Because they can't create a deed before we approved the lot split, right?
Yeah, I.
Okay.
I just told him, why haven't we can ask for one? Record surveys, well, we're gonna look at.
Right.
It has the description on there. They take that description and pop it to the deed. And that's what actually creates a lot. And he said, well, just put word of order in there. So I said, okay.
Okay. I mean, there were, there were addresses, I mean, I was wondering why I didn't make it and.
There might be some unique circumstance.
But I understand. Yeah.
We understand what that shows. Been here for a while. Also, by the way, this last, uh, session, we put in some language to help, um, legitimize some of those illegitimate subdivisions that are out there where people have gone down, recorded them at the county. The county's taken them, notwithstanding it didn't have all of the sign offs that's required from the local governments. And then they're sitting out there. Now a third party who's pop, who bought that lot unsuspecting, wants to build and we say, that isn't even a legal lot. But we put clear language in here and said that if we as a town provide a way to do that and it meets all of our ordinances, then we can go ahead, after the fact, have that come through that process and get that process approved, that lot approved by us.
You're saying that's in this language? I don't see that here. You're saying, or that's in the state language?
It's in the state legislation. I'm just saying that there, well, our whole goal this last session was to try to clean up some of these problem things that we've seen. Some county recorders aren't as diligent as others and make sure that we've signed off, but we asked them, uh.
So you're, you're basically giving them a pass, is what you're doing?
We asked all county recorders just to agree to have some language in there that they could not accord without our approval. And they said, someone said, no, I don't understand why.
That does seem silly, but they don't want the bottleneck, probably. All right, um.
I think that does most of it, but, uh, so we've changed the joint utility commission or committee to, uh, local utilities, uh, big plans.
Yeah, it looks to me like the, the changes are, are, do upgrade the, 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 the section for sure. So we're, we're not doing public comments, but since you're here and you've obviously put a lot of thought into this, I'd love to hear if you've got any brief response to what you've heard.
Yeah, um, regarding the grammar requests, um, my objections have nothing to do with what most of those were about, which people were processing. I thought it's caused, which I agree is important, but that's not what I'm talking about. So, and I understand state code has changed and, uh, St. George has a variety of processes. I've actually talked to the guy in the basement.
That's what I'm gonna call him from now on.
Yes.
The guy in the basement, yes.
So, um, my objections, the mayor just got done saying that the fire department signs off and the water board or culinary water. I've also spoken with both of those departments and they have never been questioned on any of the lot splits.
Well.
Now, that's my word against his, I suppose, but we can take it further, but it's.
But no, I think you, you, you might misunderstand. The, the prior language didn't, uh, the way the language here is it didn't, it, it actually required them to get, um, a signature from a committee that doesn't exist, so it's no surprise.
Utilities now, right, utilities.
Yeah.
Previous code and the proposed code, you know, refers to culinary water. I'm just saying that the only person who is looking at these things is our mayor.
Oh, yeah. And isn't that, I'm just wondering, I'm not trying to be argumentative, isn't that the job of town staff? Or no?
Well, and I'm not a lawyer and not the code person, but in my conversation with the guy in the basement, one of the few things that they do that's going to require is that the land use authority sign off. And, um, my understanding of that is that it's either the town council or someone designated by the town council. It's similar to the ordinance that we have that designated an individual to be our appeal authority. So if, if our process were to include an individual to be the designated land use authority, we'd have to do that other than saying town staff.
We just have a pretty tiny town staff. That's the issue here.
Well.
I mean.
But my point, there's two, you know? Is Ben gonna approve these things? I mean, why? Land use authority is what the state says.
Too far uphill here. Um, I do, I, I definitely appreciate, I, I looked at your, both your email and your attachments and there, you did a lot of due diligence and I would like to recommend, uh, to, to the town that we look at what additional changes we might be able to make in some future version of this that, um, that, uh, that, that could make sure that when these kinds of decisions are made, that those decisions are trusted by the town. That's all.
What is the urgency you're taking down the road at this time?
No, the point is that right now, I feel like, I'm gonna recommend that we, that we, um, I'd like to make a motion that we actually, uh, approve these amendments as they are because they're necessary now. And I don't see any reason to not make these changes because we have other changes we might wanna make later. So that makes motions on the table. Do they have a second?
Second.
Are you gonna call to support discussion?
Yeah, is there any discussion on this, no?
Yes, I'd just like to say that, um, in our, in our ordinances, what we would do after we change this to say that, that there's a designate, the land use authority, they can designate, that person that you talked to in the basement has been designated under our ordinance to be able to approve these administratively. Now, we even put in our ordinance or designate. There's ordinances for me that say the city attorney or designate, because I can't look at everything that's in. So even though ultimately falls on me, I have the ability to say, ask Paula, my deputy city attorney, for her to look at it and sign off on it. In this case here, I talked a little bit to the mayor about this last night. It's still would be good to point out by the time we get to the council change, make sure that it says that they shall appoint someone who is, who will review these and sign off on them. And they could do that by title. You have limited staff here, so it makes sense to say the mayor or designate. Because there might be times the mayor says, Ben, you can review these and you have the authority to sign off on. That's how it's done, um, many layers of government all the time. And when you have limited staff like this, you don't have many to choose from. So, uh, and then as far as being signed off, I just wanted to clarify that. While some of it says authorities in here, that's because up north, along West Esfera, they'll have a sanitary water authority district that handles all of the wastewater that many cities belong to. They'll have a fire authority. The unified fire assault, they handle many cities. And so those are separate governmental entities that they have to give that to. When the, when we have a situation here, up here where the, the fire is under the town, then there's no fire authority to go to, it's just the town signing off on it. We do have to get the, um, water district to sign off. And that's how, that's what that means with the sense of authority. So it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean a department of the city or town becomes an authority. Authority is a separate legal entity that handles these.
I'm talking about the real world and what residents of this community have to live with. And one individual making these decisions with no one else participating in that has resulted in significant problems, including the fact that we don't have. resulted in significant problems, including the fact that we don't have a plan for roads in this town. And roads is one of the only issues that comes up consistently. And yet, we're going to go from three to 10. We have some urgency. We need to go from three to 10, increase the number of.
There's no, the point is, there's no, there's nothing, it doesn't matter who's in charge of that. You can only deny things if they're, if illegally can't do it. So I don't, anyway.
Having more than one set of eyes might prevent decisions that are short sighted.
No, but again, decisions can't, think, think you, as a town, we, we're locked into, any official can't not do something if it's legal to do it. You can't deny somebody the right to do something with their property that they have the legal right to do. That's, that's not authoritarian of anybody, honestly. It doesn't matter how many big the committee is or who's, who's on it. That's, that's anarchy.
What was presented to the planning commission was pretty in depth.
I understand, and I've asked, I've asked the town to take.
A number of suggestions, six, I think, totally, and each one of them had supporting justification.
And I, and I, as you heard me say, I said.
Seems reasonable to pause. And, and now I'm done now.
Okay, thank you.
Seems reasonable to pause.
I've asked the town to look into that further. These changes do definitely upgrade the process. So the motion's on the table. We have a second. We've had discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. I, I hope you don't feel ignored. I definitely read your stuff and think it's good and hopefully it'll take.
Well, I think it's interesting that we need to just keep looking at, certainly keep moving in time. Appreciate the documentation and all the hard work that we have been trying to get through some of that.
Yeah, and I, I think we will. I think there, I think there were some good, great ideas in there. I've passed it on to, to Ben already even before tonight, so hopefully it won't be in vain. Next agenda is a public hearing on the proposed zone creation. This is exciting. Of 10 dot 10 dot 130 CRZ camping resort zone. This has been around for a while. It brings out a Janet, too bad she's not here to push it through, but I'd like to open the public hearing. Anybody here that has comments on this rather hefty document? I hope not everybody printed it out, is what it killed a few.
Right, so.
There's nobody here in the room I think that's got comment? Does anybody online have comment? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. What do y'all think? I know when you had at least a handful of typos you wanted to point out the name. Quickly blow through here and then let's get a, let's get a motion on the table.
Under A purpose, going down to number two, is there, is the rest of the sentence left off there? Such uses will not negatively impact what the surrounding.
Oh, look at the format. It looks like there's. It looks like it's, we'll talk with one versus town about valley and then it has two and continues to second.
Yeah, well, that's, that's typical with them, but I think number two should say not negatively impact the surrounding landscape or that whatever it is. And three, four, five.
There's something missing there, I think.
Do you guys need that?
Yes.
Is there something missing there?
So I'm looking at the document where we, we had decided to put this in the back in where you guys were going to make edits and changes and proposals. And that's how it currently, number two currently reads. We'll have to go back and look at the original language that was pasted into here, here with the, where did that?
Where did the rest of that say?
Where did that go? Because it looks like the rest of them are correct.
Yes, yes.
Semi colons and, yeah, right, number two is definitely completely wrong.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Did they mean environment?
Something to that effect.
Neighbors, yeah, yeah. There, there's a bit of a gap there.
Yeah.
I don't know if this caught that.
So I guess, so I'm looking at the original language that, that we, where we put this in there. It's, it's a cliffhanger, just like.
Oh, so nobody, nobody caught it? That's interesting.
If we want to add some language there on number two about negatively impacting something, now would be the time to.
The surrounding landscape.
They wanted you guys to start thinking about where to go in there.
Right. And so we all lost it. It was, it was a test. We all failed.
There's a blank.
We failed it.
There are also a hundred dollar bill taken to the basket.
I think, I honestly, I, I read it, the spirit of it, I think, is it, is it intended to not negatively impacts residences.
Nearby.
Nearby people. I think. I don't think it's necessarily environmental as, as much as it is.
We got to face this. I've said it over so many times, but I think we're, we're taking the document in place, converting it to a work document.
It's in a Google doc now and.
And then you chase in the Google doc and every time we do this, we live to.
Some little thing.
Do we want a table bring it back next time again? Is it, is, there's no real pressing urgency? Let's go ahead and take another shot at, at edits. Everybody.
And I can do this one last thing though.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, let's get what's changes for sure. You know, we make these on the Google doc, Ben, so that they're, they're for the rest of us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Paragraph four landscaping and recreational commodities. A four, I just got to be A one, we come for. Is it legal for us to say something in that landscaping, the plants and trees, that we do not want oleanders or other poisonous?
Things are not consumable by our livestock, basically.
Because we have so many animals in the area. And I've read that even a child can eat one leaf and die.
That's true.
Okay.
So I think.
Maybe it's just cover something generic like no poisonous to.
Indigenous.
Animals or humans. Yeah. The indigenous might be a little tricky because I, I would imagine plants that are indigenous to Southern Utah are very limited.
You're bringing back very bad memories.
You want to be careful.
I have an oleander ordinance in St. George.
Oh, really?
That we wrote that was because of a couple of horse people that claimed that they're, anyway. They, they had been banned in so many places and I looked clear across the country, did not find anything. And then the last one was north, south, north Las Vegas, they for sure did. I called them and they said, not only is it not banned, but it's on our list of encouraged plantings because of the drought. And so I will say this, I, I will just tell you, it's on our books. It's one of those that when I get the opportunity to sneak it out, I'd love to sneak it out because proving, I mean, there are places where you can plant. I have oleanders in my yard. There are no horses around my, my property, right? And, and there are oleanders that have continued to be planted all over St. George. And then trying to determine as these people wanted to do, who's oleander leaves were in the ditch.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There are oleanders for the next five miles up this ditch. I can't charge anyone for this. And it's very difficult. And I also was pointed out by a botanist during that time, that all these different desert plants, that are poisonous too. And so I would ask this, is there really a problem that you want to address?
I, I think the one concern I have is that, and I, and I, where I'm, where I'm in sync with when is that this particular ordinance is covering land that by nature is going to be probably surrounded by remote, like open space or IPAG. And so if on their boundary, they do plant something that wipes out a herd, that would suck.
Yeah. Well, I, I have an instance that happened right here in town. And that was, we got horse property out in Cedar Point. People had two horses. A new lot was completed a few months ago. They started planting oleanders. And if they get onto that horse property, which is only a lot away, they can lose a horse.
One burdle.
Yeah. And that it's too close.
We don't, I don't necessarily want to call out oleander. I want to be just general about plants that are poisonous to livestock or something like the humans and livestock, something like, just, just to, if you can avoid it, it's for your landscaping. It's not like we're asking you to go kill things that are wild. We're saying, if you're going to put landscaping, you know, pay attention to whether or not it's going to kill your neighbor's cows. That's all.
So I read something funny online too. It says that in some countries where they can survive because they're ashamed of things, they gather up all the oleander leaves and you go.
We can make them climb on our elementary school or junior high and high school. So I just now picked it after with Utah, that maybe they were trying to kill us.
Maybe so, yeah. But they're trying to make, like I said, if you survive, then it's part of the graduation requirement is getting through playground.
That's what it was. Yes, and that's what it is. So I'm going to do the oleanders now. But, but in our reality, what I'm saying is, is we, if you put an ordinance on there, there usually has to be a penalty. And it's very hard to prove. And so if we do a general that's harmful to, to wild animals.
Yeah, I mean, and it's part of the landscape requirements.
That makes it even more difficult. I mean, a court would look at that and say, that's such an error, they know. How do people know what you consider? Because I read many articles that said a horse would have to eat quite a bit of oleanders. And I've also seen firsthand what happens when the city dwellers go chop all our oleanders and they go take it to the nearest field and just dump them. And there are cows in there and the cows got sick, you know? And, and so I, I understand what you're saying, but it just know that it would be difficult to a horse.
You don't think it'd be pretty easy to determine whether or not something's poisonous? I mean, I don't know.
To animals, yes.
I mean, if you're going to plant, that's.
We were looking at this and we had three attorneys scouring.
Okay.
We had all these different treatises and books from, for different veterinary schools that talked about whether this plant was poisonous or not, how much would have to be, technically it was, but how much would they have to eat? And, and all of that. Because I'm, I'm sure oleander would be poisonous to people too, which you have to really consume.
Just to me, it's like if you're starting from your, your landscaping from scratch, just pick something you know isn't poisonous, like not something you think might be if you'd a hundred pounds of it. Just pick the one thing you know isn't.
If you want a list, I put a list, but I will not make it general because it doesn't give any guidance or enforcement.
Okay, all right.
The reason why I thought we could say not poisonous plants is because it specifically says here, the names of the trees to be used must be included and a landscape plant submitted. So.
So the town could approve it.
The town could either approve or disapprove based on poisonous oleanders.
And why, everything we've done in the law, courts and us and changing the law has been geared towards getting rid of the arbitrariness that planning commissions and city councils have had across the state to say, ah, yeah, we, we like her, she's, she's good, she, we'll let her go plant those there. And she says she can keep her horses away. And, oh, but this person doesn't get it over here.
Yeah, we definitely don't want that. That's what we're trying to avoid.
And so people have to have some notice on what is good and what isn't. Now, typically cities will put out a list of those plants that they encourage people to, to plant. You certainly could put out a list and we could put it in here of plants that you can't.
We could do that, okay.
But that's what I suggest we're going to do, that just say we can't anywhere.
Be specific for the ones you can, yeah. Okay, well, let's look at that. You can actually, since we're going to table this, let's, you go ahead and try to maybe draft something in that Google doc and we'll, I'll look at them. So I'd like to make a motion to table this, so. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So if you look at that, I, I think something like we did where it's adjacent to agricultural property.
Right.
It's so hard to say, you know, you never know who's going to put what in there. So someone decides to order a horse, horse and friends for a couple of weeks. And before they said, oh, they're always, that's always vague, it's not a big deal. You got a problem.
You never can. You never know when you're going to have a problem.
Lee, you ready to make your favorite motion of the night?
I'm going to make the motion with you, Jerry.